Good Tuesday evening, everyone. The April 23rd, 2024 Meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM. Mirroring and modeling the way our students begin each day, I ask that we observe a moment of silence at this time. Please join me. Thank you. I'll now ask for Member Campbell to read our board commitment statement. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Thrower. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off their electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding irregular agenda items or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Board Clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Lori Conrad, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District 5.
Here.
School Board member, student, I'm sorry, Board member Victor Nygaard, Lakeware High.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Power, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Good evening, Dr. Gullett. Would you please introduce the member of your team who will be helping us with tonight's inspiration and pledge, please?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the board, great to see you this evening and great to have a full audience here. We have a lot of inspiration and pledge and recognitions tonight, so I'll kick this off with inspiration and pledge. And I'm going to bring Ms. Megan, Megan Mall from our Public Education Foundation forward. But, and while she does that, it is my incredible pleasure to recognize the employee who's going to come forward next. And I don't think it's a surprise anymore. We surprised him yesterday morning bright and early, surprised his principal too. We have the honor of having Mr. Ed Lanza, our Florida School Related Employee of the Year. The... So I have to share a few things about Mr. Lanza. I'm going to say this again. He is, he was one of the finalists for the state recognition, and I had a great call that told me that he won for the entire state of Florida. My response was, I'm not surprised. Let me share a little bit about Mr. Lanza before you hear from him. And he is a very humble man. And he's described by so many as polite, dependable, humble, thorough, detail-oriented, and what an outstanding work ethic everybody says about him. I am grateful for his service to our country. He proudly served our country in military service in the Vietnam War. Thank you, sir, for that. And has been contributing to the lives of many at Saddlewood Elementary School. And we are just so grateful to have him serve as a paraprofessional but does so much more than that because he truly exemplifies what an outstanding employee is, represents our country and our district so well. And just to see the students come in, as I was recognizing him yesterday morning, spoke for itself. Incredibly proud of, of everything he does for us and what he represents, not only now for Marion County, but the entire state of Florida. Thank you, Mr. Lanza.
You're going to get a lot of applause tonight, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Congratulations again, Mr. Lanza. The Foundation is proud to be a sponsor of the School Related Employee of the Year program and what a testament to Marion County Public Schools' support staff that we now have a representative for the state of Florida. So, thank you, Mr. Lanza. You are a big deal to your students and your school community. So congratulations. Can't wait to celebrate this summer at the Florida Department of Education event where he will be recognized for the statewide award. Good afternoon, Chair Thrower, School Board members, and Superintendent Dr. Gullett. I'm also honored to be here this evening for additional reasons. It is the Public Education Foundation Awareness Week, and every day we are thrilled to be celebrating and highlighting different programs and initiatives of our organization. Tonight, I start with one of our signature programs started in 1991 to recognize and reward our outstanding educators called the Golden Apple Teacher Recognition Program. The selections process is approximately four months long. It starts in September of each school year with our schools nominating a Teacher of the Year. Those Teachers of the Year then submit a portfolio, they go through an interview and an observation process. Thank you to Ms. Conrad for serving on our selections committee for Golden Apple. The grand finale is at our annual Golden Apple Gala, and during that evening, we celebrate all of our school-based teachers of the year. But we also recognize the five finalists for Teacher of the Year and name our Golden Apple teacher who will represent Marion County Public Schools. So tonight, we will be congratulating and hearing from our 2024 Teacher of the Year, Ms. Jennifer Brown, representing Forest High School. And with Ms. Brown, she is accompanied by a lot of her fellow Golden Apple Academy members because being named Teacher of the Year, while very prestigious, it's the start of a journey in a cohort of outstanding educators who then work to give back in supporting, uplifting, and elevating their peers. So as Ms. Brown comes to join me on the podium, I'd also like to ask our fellow Academy members to stand and be recognized as well.
Good evening, Dr. Gullett, Board members, parents, students. There's a lot in the room today. I'm so honored to be representing Marion County Public Schools as your Teacher of the Year this, this year. What an amazing process. Like, I had no idea going into this how in-depth and rigorous this product was, so it's been a ride. I'm a product of Marion County Public Schools. I went to Wyamina Park Elementary in Fort King, and I actually taught at both of those schools throughout my career, so that was really cool to be able to teach with the teachers who inspired me to be a teacher. I also went to Vanguard. Now I teach at Forest, so I never thought I'd say, "Go Wildcats," but go Wildcats. That's where we are today. The gala, number one, was amazing. If every district could do this, I've heard from teachers in other districts, and they don't compare. Like, our district really does it over the top, above and beyond, and I'm just so grateful for the process, making us all feel like we're at the Oscars and just appreciate it. I'm not usually one who enjoys the spotlight. Like, I can talk in front of kids all day, but this is a little nerve-wracking. But I love the opportunities to empower my colleagues to feel empowered with what they do and to shine. And that's really where my heart of teaching is at. Because when, when teachers feel valued and respected, that shines forth and their teacher, their students feel the impact of that, and then they are more successful and achieve more. The alarming attrition rate right now of teachers just really underscores the urgency we have to develop new teachers and make those teachers that we have really grow. And that's where my heart is. And we need to step up as a community to really acknowledge teachers' invaluable contributions that they make on a daily basis. It takes all of us to inspire teachers to recognize the intrinsic worth of the relentless effort that we do every day to invest in our kids and each other. This is one reason I'm really looking forward this year to participating in the Foundation. One of the first initiatives that we've been working on is the Ed Camp. And like I said again, that's where my heart is, and so being able to work with the Golden Apple Academy and the professional leadership and learning team to be able to bring Ed Camp to teachers this year, to both veterans and new teachers. It's proof that we have the forward-thinking people on our team that are going to allow us to see the value of teachers, what we have to offer each other, opportunities to encourage and collaborate with, and inspire teachers to embrace their practice and transform their classrooms into a place where their students can really flourish. So I just want to thank my family. I don't think I did that the night of the gala. They were like... Because we know if there's one teacher in the household, like, the whole family is a teacher, even the dog, because you're all put on duty, so it's, it's a whole job. And the lasting impact that I've had on every teacher, every school, every administrator, every school and every district that I've worked for has left a lasting legacy on me and has inspired me and molded me into the teacher that I am today. I wouldn't be here right now without them. The Public Ed Foundation has already made me feel like part of the family. It's really been enlightening seeing the hard work that they put in and the heart that they put into making this district great for the kids and for our teachers. And so I just value their work, and I am excited to be a part of it this year. Thank you. And now we stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Ms. Brown, we're definitely going to come down and take a picture with you and, and hopefully with the rest of the elite academy that you have now joined. You definitely have an even busier year ahead of you with lots of fun and satisfaction and surprises. And on behalf of the board, we're just really grateful for the commitment that you have to students and, and how you put your heart and soul into everything that you do for your kids. We say "our kids" because that's really who they are, you know, extension of, of the family. And so we'd love to take a picture with you. And, Mr. Lanza, I'm so sorry, but we really do want to get a picture with you as well, and you certainly are a classic example of it's clearly not what you say, it's what you do that makes a pretty big difference. So you're not quite off the hook, sir, and I hope you'll indulge us and take a picture. All right, ready, everybody? Okay. And now we stand for the pledge. For the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Ms. Brown, we're definitely going to come down and take a picture with you and, and hopefully with the rest of the elite academy that you have now joined. You definitely have an even busier year ahead of you with lots of fun and satisfaction and surprises. And on behalf of the board, we're just really grateful for the commitment that you have to students and, and how you put your heart and soul into everything that you do for your kids. We say "our kids" because that's really who they are, you know, extension of, of the family. And so we'd love to take a picture with you. And, Mr. Lanza, I'm so sorry, but we really do want to get a picture with you as well, and you certainly are a classic example of it's clearly not what you say, it's what you do that makes a pretty big difference. So you're not quite off the hook, sir, and I hope you'll indulge us and take a picture. All right, ready, everybody? Okay. And it just keeps coming. Dr. Thodder, up next, I believe we're recognizing some students for their dedicated service this year on this very stage. Would you please introduce the member of your team who will help with this first recognition to kick us off?
Certainly will. Dr. Livinggood will come forward, and as she does, Board, I think you're going to recognize these very special student leaders for their service, not just in our district, but here at the school board table. So, Dr. Livinggood.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair Thrower, Board members, and Superintendent Dr. Gullett. During the 2023-2024 school year, we had seven students who served as student representatives to the board. In this role, they served in an advisory, non-voting capacity to the school board and were able to provide input on board agenda items. It's important to highlight, because of the success, that on March 26, 2024, having student representatives serve in this role became board policy, and we have already now begun the application process for the 24-25 school year. So at this time, I would like to recognize the student representatives for this current school year to the board for, and I will begin with the students that served during quarter one. Please come to the podium when I call your name. We had Genesis Muniz Rosado from Bellevue High School and... representatives serve in this role became board policy. And we have already now begun the application process for the 24-25 school year. So at this time, I would like to recognize the student representatives for this current school year to the board for, and I will begin with, the students that served during quarter one. Please come to the podium when I call your name. We had Genesis Muniz Rosado from Bellevue High School, and Caitlin Kovejak from Westport High School. We'll have them come to the front, because I'm sure we'll want a picture afterwards.
Absolutely. But we're going to do it up on the stage, Mr. Christian says.
Okay.
He'll call you up together.
Yes, so go on up. You can go right there. So quarter two, we had Olivia Bittenger from Denellen High School, and Bryce McTeer from North Marion High School. Quarter three, we had Blake Barnes from Forest High School, and Devia Neander from Vanguard And quarter four, he's currently serving in this role, is Victor Nygaard. He's from Lakeware High School.
It's so amazing, and we're going to have you come up here and take a picture. So just turn around for a second, if you would, please. It's so good to see all of you again, and as your names were being called, and I'm sure the rest of the board felt the same way, we were all just thinking of different little memories that we have from your service time with us, and just how you brought so many unique and special qualities to the board, which really elevates the board. Student voice is so important, because that's really why we're here. And I also wanted to share my thanks with Board Member Campbell for helping bring this vision to fruition. We wanted to do this years ago, and then COVID kind of got in our way, and things got derailed for a while, you know, nobody was really getting together as much as we wanted to. So to bring that back to the forefront and then enshrine it in board policy means that you have set the trend. Once it's in policy, it's not that easy to remove. So there will be students like you that will have the opportunity to do the same, hopefully forever. So that's the contribution that you have made to Marion County Public Schools, in addition to all of your endeavors, and remembering rock band, and remembering which school are you thinking of going to for college, are you going to go to college, you know, just so many things. So it's just been a pleasure to have you, so please rejoin us one more time, and we'll take a picture from up here. So come on up on stage. Oh, yes, first that picture. As only Kevin can.
Congratulations to our inaugural class.
Yes, that's right.
Are we standing or sitting?
You're sitting.
We're sitting, okay.
Two of you can stand between the two board members, two of you between these.
I remember your Halloween costume.
Hey, Bryce, how are you? Good to see you.
Hi, good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Hi, Devia.
It's like a reunion.
Please don't tumble.
Don't fall off the stage, please.
That would not be good.
Yeah, bring it over.
Slide down. Slide over.
Screw down, screw down.
You need us to screw down, I can.
Everybody's looking right here. Couple more. Great job, thank you so much.
Thanks.
We've already heard from some of you. So happy to see you all again. Congratulations on your future endeavors. Can't wait to shake your hand when you walk across the stage for graduation. Are you excited for your graduation? I know, we'll be at your graduation, it's like, we'll get to shake your hands. It'll be great. It's nice to see what you've got there. Yes, I'll be at graduation, absolutely. I'll miss Westport.
I was thinking, this would look really elegant.
Yeah, I get the black licorice jersey. That's the Australian stuff? Yeah, I get the black licorice.
You can still be here, so.
Yes, good to see you.
So wonderful.
It was.
Yep, yeah. And that, ladies and gentlemen, was the first inaugural class of student school board All right, well, Dr. Gullett, I think next we're recognizing some employees involved in after-school programs. So will you please share with us the member of your team that will be coming forward to offer this recognition?
We are, we're flipping over to employees and coming back to students in a moment. Yes, and I don't know if you know, Board, that it's National After-School Professionals' Week, and it's never a better time than to recognize some of our employees, and the employees you're going to see tonight have more than 30 years or more of longevity in this program. So we are really appreciative of the service they provide to our students in this program. So happy to introduce Ms. Beck, who will introduce our very special employees. Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Beck.
Good evening, Board Chair, Board Members, Superintendent. I'm just thrilled to be here this evening. This is one of the great parts of my job is to be part of the Marion After-Schools program. And this evening, I get to introduce Ms. Karen Larrinco. She is the coordinator for the Marion After-Schools program, and she is going to be introducing these outstanding ladies, their years of service and contribution to our students in Marion County Public Schools. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Larrinco.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Thrower, Board Members, and Dr. Gullett. We are here to bring awareness to National After-School Professionals Appreciation Week, which is April 22 through the 26th. This week is a time to recognize and appreciate those who work with youth during out-of-school hours and provide ongoing support to after-school professionals who make a difference in the lives of young people in their communities. And tonight, I have the honor to recognize three ladies in our department who have given over 30 years of service to Marion After-School programs. Ms. Simmons has been with MAP for 34 years. She started at Evergreen and was there for 21 years, before moving to Saddlewood, where she continued as the site manager for eight years, and then moved to the administrative office as an area manager. Margaret White. Margaret has also been with MAP for 34 years. She began her career as an activity leader at East Marion, and she currently is the site manager at Fort McCoy for the last 18 years. In addition to her site manager duties, Margaret assists with the school's safety patrol program and fans guarding. Carla Brown. Ms. Brown has been with us for 32 years. She started as an activity leader at College Park, and then became a site manager at Ocala Springs for 10 years. She began the afternoon program at Osceola, and was the site manager at Eighth Street in Osceola for 11 years. Most recently, Carla was the site manager at Greenway for six years. Carla now works as an area manager in our administrative office. Thank you for all the dedication and the impact to the students of Marion County Public Schools, and for representing the site managers in our entire department that serve students before and after the school bell. Thank you.
We definitely want to come down and take a picture with you, and as I was sitting here, I was thinking, gosh, it's not just the length of time where I added it up twice, so I hope I'm right, or otherwise I'm about to humiliate myself, but I think I added up 100 years. 100 years of service between the three of you. And that doesn't even begin to speak to the depth of your service to children across all those years, and what you have meant to them, and what you have meant to their schools. So on behalf of the board, just really wanted to say thank you and for everything, and for coming out tonight to be recognized. I know we have a few board members sitting up here whose children directly benefited from MAP participation, so please, Board, share with these ladies, you know, what it's meant to you. This is incredible.
Go ahead.
Sure, thank you, Chair. Ironically, today, when I was visiting the Hillcrest Art Show, one of the former folks from MAP, she's still currently at Dr. N.H. Jones, but she was in the parking lot on her way there, and I was like, oh my goodness, it's so good to see you, are you still a jo-- because of the impact. Honestly, the impact that you ladies have made, I know the impact that the MAP workers, it used to be called Extended Day, workers had on my own children, all three of my children participated in the programs at Dr. N.H. Jones and at Osceola Middle School, and just super grateful, because I don't think that we can take for granted what this actually means to working families. You are making such a significant impact, not only in the students' lives, but in the families' lives. To let families know that their children are taken care of, not just taken care of, but their learning is extending on into the afternoon as well. I'm just super grateful, and this is going to continue to be one of those programs that is near and dear to my heart. My family has benefited greatly. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell.
I just want to say thank you also. This program not only impacted me as a parent, but it also impacted me as a teacher. You all helped fill out the gap for our students and our families each and every day, reaching out to help our students and our families get the best education for their students that they can. So we just really appreciate you and thank you for the effort that you put in every single day.
Absolutely. Board Member Cummings.
And I as well want to thank you all, not just you, but the other coworkers that work in the program, because I think sometimes we underestimate or undervalue what you guys really do on a daily basis. I've been able to partake of the program with my own kids, but now my grandkids. So I appreciate everything that you guys are doing, and it's an extension of the school day, and it really helps those kids. So thank you so much.
Thank you, yes, we're honoring you and all of your team members that make this happen as testified. Thank you. We're going to come down and take a picture.
There you go. Here we go. And one, two, three, couple more. And good to go. Thank you, congratulations.
Dr. Gullett, would you please introduce the member of your team who will help with this task?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I am pleased to do so. Dr. Livinggood will come back to the podium, and what you're going to see tonight are more of our scholar athletes who are getting, or earning, college scholarships based on their athletic ability and on their academic performance. So really pleased to have them recognized tonight. Dr. Livinggood.
Yes, thank you. We have some student athletes to recognize this evening that not only excel in their sport, but in the classroom as well. And we are excited to introduce them tonight, because they serve as an excellent role model for their peers. At this time, our Coordinator of Athletics and Activities, Donnie Tucker, will come to the podium, and he will share a few words and introduce the student athletes.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Livinggood. Good evening, Chair Thrower, Board Members. Dr. Gullett, what an honor it is to be here again this month to recognize these fine student athletes for their hard work, and what we're about to, the athletes that we're about to mention, I'll also say what sport they've earned a scholarship in. So that also means that they've excelled in the classroom as well. The, I'm going to introduce them by school. All of our student athletes aren't, that I'm going to read their names, they're not here tonight. A lot of them have other obligations, some of them are involved in a second or third sport that they're participating in right now. So we'll start with Bellevue High School. Kylie Summerlin, cross-country. When I call your name, if you are here, please come down and stand in front. Jordan McLaughlin, softball. Gigi Santiago, softball. Lanay Howard, softball. Jessica Harpley, cheer. Madison Douglas, flag football. Natalie Collins, volleyball. And Dakota Krajewski, volleyball as well. Those are all the athletes from Bellevue High School.
All Bellevue High?
Yes, ma'am. The next student athletes will be from Denellen High School. Bodie Burns, football. Chris Henry, football. Norvell James, football. Tatiana Matthews, girls' basketball. And Talyn Watson, baseball. Now from Forest High School, Avery Bumbach, swimming. Ben Camp, swimming. Ashley Sampson, swimming. Kaylin Howard, girls' volleyball. Ava Quenches, girls' volleyball. Elian Godden, football. Elijah Dennis, football. Isaiah Osborne, football. Israel Evans, football. Matthew Hart, football. Clarissa Zawowski, girls' soccer. Camden Collins, girls' soccer. Adrian Dross, boys' soccer. Brantley Wiggington, boys' soccer. Kayden Smith, baseball. Brock White, baseball. And Malia Flagler, girls' basketball. These are all Forest High School. From Lakeware High School, Jamani Morales, football. I don't think Jamani was with us tonight.
We'll give him a hand anyway.
Yes, please. North Marion High School, Antoine Hampton and Tykeem Wheeler, both from football. I do want to say something about Antoine. He is also a two-time, as of this weekend, he is a two-time state champion in the sport of weightlifting, so. And last but not least, from Westport High School, we have Leanna Papst, girls' basketball. Jamie Drake, girls' soccer. Jenna Drake, girls' soccer. Ayana Blocker, volleyball. And Dedrick Grady, football. These are all of our student athletes for tonight. I also want to take an opportunity to, or take a moment to recognize the parents that are in the audience. They spend a lot of time toting these athletes to and from school, to and from their sports when they're younger. I know a lot of them are driving now, but they indeed need to be recognized for all the time that they spend raising these fine student athletes. We also have with us tonight from our high schools that are represented here tonight. From Bellevue High School, we have Ms. Heather Guest. From Denellen High School, Mr. Wade Martin. Forest High School, Mr. Lamar Rembert. Lakeware High School, Ms. Colleen Wade. North Marion--
to come out and be acknowledged tonight. It really means a lot to us as a Board to see each and every student excel in their own ways, and so we appreciate you coming out. And also, to your parents and to your teachers and to any of those special somebodies that have helped you along the way. I know from being an athlete that not every day is perfect, and sometimes you can be hard on yourself. So, I just wanted to take that moment and acknowledge everyone in your support network that has helped you get this far, and I'm quite certain the success is going to continue, that you'll find your network and expand it as you go on to college, and you're going to be well-prepared, because the challenges will continue, but so will the successes. So, we're going to come down, take a quick picture with you, so you can get back to doing your things. All right, thank you.
You don't have to stay. Yes. Thank you all for being here, and congratulations. I love your hair. Good night. Have a good one. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
That's right. Okay, I think we're on to our final one. Okay. I believe we have reached our final formal recognition this evening, which comes from a group who is no stranger to appearing before this Board. So, Dr. Gullett, please share who will lead us in our final recognition this evening, the grand finale.
Yes, grand finale, that is, and we've had some people waiting very patiently. I'm going to bring forward Dr. Stacy Varner, who is going to introduce the Ocalamarion County Realtors Association, who is here to present some teacher mini-grants. So, thanks to everyone who's waited so patiently.
Good evening, Dr. Varner.
Good evening, our Board Chair Thrower, Board Members, Dr. Gullett. I am happy to introduce Ocalamarion County Realtors this evening. Every year, they offer our schools an opportunity to apply for a mini-grant to support their innovative ideas in the classroom or either at the school level. This year, they awarded our schools $9,750. To recognize the schools who were awarded these grants are Randy Alward, Sue Shields, Nancy Johnson, and Darlene Yacht. Okay, they're joined, must to the podium.
We just keep recycling that check every year, so just let's just roll with it, okay? So, I've been doing, had the honor to do this since 2014, when I was our association president, and here it is 10 years later, and I'm still doing it, but it's my honor. Sue Shields is our Community Awareness Chair this year, and every time we send these out at the beginning of the school year, we look forward to getting them all back. We had a ton of applications. This year, we were able to award 23 different grants. Kind of my joke of the night, I like to joke. Like I said, I've been doing this for 10 years now, and every time I get up here, I just kind of make up a number of how many years we've been doing it. Sometimes I say 15, 20, 10, whatever, but Darlene got sick of me doing that and actually did some research. So, we started this in 2003. We started with just $1,000. Then, we increased it in 2008 to $3,000. And then, again, in 2014, we increased it to $6,000. And in, I think it was 2016, just a couple of years later, we increased it to $10,000, and we're still at that level, and maybe we'll go up a little bit more with a little more convincing. So, but, you know, here it is, 21 years later. I got it right this time, and we're happy to be here, and we're honored to do this every single year. And I'm going to take a shameless plug, but we got to be here twice tonight as a school business partner of Hillcrest, so, you know, we're involved. So, I'd like to read out now, because Sue won't do it, even though I asked her to, all the recipients. So, A Street Elementary, Principal Ryan Bennett and Teacher Jennifer Aderhold. North Marion High School, Carol Sales Principal, Jennifer Filman was an applicant and recipient. Reddick Collier Elementary, Donald Manning Principal, Monica Maviyama, and I apologize if I butchered that. Lakewood High School, Wade Colleen Principal, Amal Hannah, applicant. Harborview Elementary, Joy Backsley Principal, Allison Camp, recipient. Ocala Springs Elementary, Michelle Sino Principal, Laura Mara, applicant. Ward Highlands Elementary, Teresa Buck, Julie Smith, applicant. I know Ms. Smith is here. Vanguard High School, Chris Carlisle and Michelle Nevaraz as recipient. Forest High School, Lamar Rembert, my daughter's principal, and Marcia Flag, teacher. Hillcrest School, Lori Manressa, and I know Ms. Lowe is here, and Tracy Bravo is the applicant. Dr. N.H. Jones, two of them, Robert Hensel is principal, and Mel Broderick and Jenna Tomaszewski. Westport High School, Ginger Cruz Principal, Victoria Craig, teacher. Ward Highlands Elementary, Teresa Buck and Mrs. Gurney. Hillcrest School, Lori Manressa and Orfa Kim Weingold. Fort King Middle, Michael Carter, Tracy Chin, teacher. Dunellen Middle, Ken McAtier Principal, Leslie Blunt, applicant. Spire Elementary, we're almost there. Spire Elementary, Renee Johnson Principal, Dolores Urso, recipient. North Marion Middle, James Johnson Principal, Stacy Clifton, recipient. Lakewood High School, Colleen Wade Principal, Margaret Carey, recipient. And two more. Staten Weersdale Elementary, Cindy Brody and Rochelle Onoffrey, recipient. And one more time, Forest High School, Mr. Rembert and Christina Benner. So, that is it, and we're honored to be here. Like I said, our application process, we love going through the applications and seeing all the creative things. The Principal of Dunellen High School is here, and he was telling us that the teacher that won the grant there has been able to put on a play, and the reason why the teacher couldn't be here tonight, but he wanted to be here in our honor, was her putting on a play for the very first time in 20 years, and, you know, our money's helped provide, you know, do that for them. So, I don't know if anybody, any of those teachers or principals want to come up for a quick pic, but if not, come on up.
Oh, yes, we definitely want to get a picture with everybody, and we're so grateful for your many years of support and the grants that you have provided. You know, as you read the names, so many of them we know and recognize, and that is the depth of the difference that you have made through the years. So, thank you very much. We'll look forward to seeing you next year, too.
Yeah, I'm trying, for 10 years, I've been trying to pass the buck to someone else. But here it is. I'm still here.
We're used to you.
So, I can get the picture.
We're going to have to get back there.
Any speakers?
We're closing the ranks. That's good.
Awesome, ready? Thank you. Right, he's next.
Look in this direction. Here we go. And one, two, three, a couple more. And good to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
How are you doing?
Good. Oh, you're welcome. Okay. You got your phone?
Yeah, I got it.
Thank you for my first thing.
Down to business. Ash, what a great kickoff to the evening, with so many celebrations and recognitions and just so many accomplishments of the students. And since Ms. Owensby is still sitting here, I wanted to thank her for her, on behalf of her student, Zariah, this is her pen that she made, and my other one ran out of ink. So, it was perfect timing to get my replenished pen tonight. So, thank you from your whole class, and I know that's a great project. All right, well, the fun isn't over yet, because we do have two donations to recognize. $1,000 to Bellevue High School from John and Lynn Ivory, to be used for new uniforms and expenses for track and field team members, and $1,000 to Westport High School from Citizens First Bank, to be used for a scholarship to a student attending a Florida college. So, as always, we are so grateful for the, if tonight proves nothing else, it proves that we have a depth and breadth of support in Marion County Public Schools for our students, and for that, we could not be more grateful. So, we now are going to move into the business portion of our meeting, and, Dr. Gullett, it's time to make a recommendation on tonight's agenda.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Madam Chair. I recommend approval of the agenda for the April 23, 2024 School Board Meeting, with the materials in the Board Packet, those materials distributed to Board Members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of the following items. D-20.1, D-20.2, D-20.3, D-20.4, D-20.5 have been placed under discussion. Also, Item C-15.3 has been pulled and placed under discussion, and Item C-18.2 has been completely withdrawn from the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Campbell. Second by Vice Chair Conrad. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March 7, 2024 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Cummings.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 2026, 2024 School Board Meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Conrad.
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. Ms. Martinez, please provide the proof of publication for tonight's School Board Meeting.
The notice for the April 23, 2024 School Board Meeting ran in the Ocala Gazette on April 12, 2024. The proof of publication has been attached in Board Ducks under proof of publication.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. We'll move on now to persons requesting to address the Board. I'll now ask the School Board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the School Board this evening. Good evening, Attorney Powers.
Good evening, Madam Chair. In compliance with Section 286.0114 Florida statutes, the School Board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at this evening's meeting, either regarding one of today's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on School Board and School District matters. A written summary of these procedures are available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the Board Clerk no later than 5:40 p.m. This evening's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the School Board Meeting, in the order received by the School Board Clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the Board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless a statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The Board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrative staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, those will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the Board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name, or identifying references to or identification of other students or their families are also strictly prohibited. A speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, possession, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the Board's requirements. Madam Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez, do we have any speakers this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have two speakers. Ryan Panzegraf.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
My name is Ryan Panzegraf, P-A-N-Z-E-G-R-A-F. I have been, it's about transportation, and I have two daughters, one senior graduating from Westport, and I wanted to thank you first for providing the two principals. They, my other daughter is in the second grade at Marion Oaks Elementary, and both of the principals have tried at multiple times to remedy the problem, and I don't find it to be at the school level, but the Transportation Department as a whole seems to do a very poor job of just getting the kids to and from school. This year, I believe I'm at, I want to say 27 times that she has been either picked up late for school or brought home late from school, and then over, I think, nine years of public transportation with my older daughter. I called, I know it's silly, but I started keeping track, just because I thought it was a ridiculous number. It was 261 times I called, trying to find out something to do with the bus. I've been trying to talk through multiple managers, and I call all the time, and I get very discouraged when it's just, it's constantly, over the last, I guess, 10 years, that the bus is just constantly late, and it's always the same excuse, "We can't find bus drivers." But then I try to talk to them, and I say, "Why don't we try to put up signs in other areas or create fundraising to maybe advertise on Facebook or getting a position, maybe advertising on the buses?" And all I'm ever met with is opposition, and it's never like, I don't feel like anybody ever is held accountable, because I just keep calling and... A speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, possession, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Madam Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez, do we have any speakers this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have two speakers. Ryan Panzegraff.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Hello. My name is Ryan Panzegraff, P-A-N-Z-E-G-R-A-F. I have been, it's about transportation. And I have two daughters, one senior graduating from Westport, and I wanted to thank you first for providing the two principals. They, my other daughter is in the second grade at Marion Oaks Elementary, and both of the principals have tried at multiple times to remedy the problem. And I don't find it to be at the school level, but the Transportation Department as a whole seems to do a very poor job of just getting the kids to and from school. This year, I believe I'm at, I want to say 27 times that she has been either picked up late for school or brought home late from school. And then over, I think, nine years of public transportation with my older daughter. I called, I know it's silly, but I started keeping track just because I thought it was a ridiculous number. It was 261 times I called trying to find out something to do with the bus. I've been trying to talk through multiple managers, and I call all the time, and I get very discouraged when it's just, it's constantly over the last, I guess, 10 years that the bus is just constantly late, and it's always the same excuse. We can't find bus drivers. But then I try to talk to them, and I say, why don't we try to put up signs in other areas or create fundraising to maybe advertise on Facebook or getting a position, maybe advertising on the buses? And all I'm ever met with is opposition, and it's never like, I don't feel like anybody ever is held accountable because I just keep calling and nothing ever gets done. And then I try to escalate it up the chain and talk to the multiple managers, and I, I don't know, it's, my daughter describes the school bus as a circus. She's sitting right here. She's eight years old in the second grade. She's witnessed kids on the bus, a first grader, be held down and beaten, and the school bus driver didn't even pull over or attempt to help the little kid in the first grade. And it's very disheartening when I see these kids come off the bus almost every day. Like, she gets to the point where, I mean, I have to work in the mornings, so it's, I get her to the bus stop, and I do the best that I can. But when she comes off the bus in the afternoon and she's crying, and she says that the school bus driver has told her to shut up, and they just yell, and they threaten, and for an eight-year-old to tell you that the school bus seems like a circus when the teachers are doing an excellent job. She's in the gifted program. She is on the A honor roll. She's representing Marion Oaks Elementary in their scholar program. So, I feel like we're doing our part on our end, and I mean, she's, she has to be a pretty good kid, with both of them are straight A's kids, and one's going to nursing school to college, and she's in the gifted program. So, I guess I'm just asking you guys, can we do something like, and not just keep kicking it down the road to where my grandkids are having the same problems that my now 18-year-old had when she was in the second grade? I'm just very, the management, I believe, we need to do something. If it's the same program of the same problems for 10 years of schooling, and it just perpetually gets worse, I don't think that this many times, when you call the 671 number for the Marion County School Board, it talks about the kids getting to school, and it's our job for them to get to school so that they can do, where were you, the teachers can do their job, and we graduate and all that. But if the kids can't even get there on time, or if they're brought home at a very late hour, I don't see how we can accomplish this, the goal that you guys are putting forward out to the parents.
30 seconds remaining.
Okay. I don't see how we can do that if the buses aren't picking the kids up in appropriate time, and we're missing many, many, many hours of school in a limited amount of days that the kids go to school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Martinez, do you call the next speaker, please?
Ms. Vicki Treulieb.
Evening, Ms. Treulieb.
Sorry. Takes a while to walk.
It's a long way from the back.
I know. My name's Vicki Treulieb, T-R-E-U-L-I-E-B. As you guys know, I wear many hats, and I come here tonight wearing my mom hat, and I just wanted to express some gratitude tonight, since this is the last school board meeting before Teacher Appreciation Week. My youngest daughter is five, and she attends Fordham Elementary, and I cannot say enough good things about the school and the program that you guys have implemented there. All the staff is amazing. And I've had kids, she's my third one. I can count on my, on one hand, how many teachers I've had for my kids who have been a champion of my kids, but there has been no teacher who has taught my child like the one that my daughter currently has. And I know I can't say her name, but she is an amazing person who has fought since day one for my daughter to be able to receive the accommodations that she desperately needs in order to be successful. This teacher is astounding. She teaches VPK. I don't know how she does it because that would be my worst nightmare. My daughter is not an easy child to teach by any means. She is highly curious, and she wants to learn, but she's not where she needs to be yet. But through the help of her teacher and the staff at Fordham, she's going to get there. And I think this is because they focus on that early education piece that is so necessary in the lives of these children to be able to help them succeed. With Ms. Beck's guidance there as the principal, she's amazing. She is so patient with my baby. Getting her out of the car in the morning can just be a problem, and Ms. Beck's always telling her about all the awesome things that they're going to do, and reluctantly, she will finally get out, and then she skips into class because she's happy to be there. She just doesn't want to get out of the car for whatever reason. So, I just really wanted to express my gratitude and to share with you the amazing things that are happening here. I know that a lot of times, the work that teachers do goes unseen, goes unheard. They're not the ones who are recognized by the golden apple. They're not the ones who win awards. But that doesn't mean that they're not doing the best darn job that they can possibly do. And to all you teachers out there who are working hard to be champions for our children, I see you. I applaud you, and I thank you for the hard work and sacrifice that you're doing every day, because whether you see it or not, you are making a huge difference in the lives of these children. And I, for one, want to be the one to tell you how amazing you are. Hang in there. There's only a month more. We can do it. Happy Teacher Appreciation.
Wow. Thank you, Ms. Treulieb. Really appreciate the kind words, for sure. Means a lot. All right. We're going to move on to some informational items. Board items 9.1 through 9.8 are information only per Board Policy 6345. The superintendent is authorized to approve and execute any construction contract change order that will increase the construction contract amount by $25,000 or less, or that will decrease the construction amount. The first one is clearing of Site B for new elementary schools W, Change Order Number One, Work Authorization Number Four, Project 24-101. Demolition of gymnasium as part of new gymnasium construction at Osceola Middle School, Change Order One, Work Authorization Number Nine, Project 24-109. Modification of the security fencing system at Harborview Elementary School, Change Order Number One, Work Authorization Number Twenty-Six, Project 23-131. Modification of the security fencing system at Saddlewood Elementary School, Change Order Number One, Work Authorization Number Twenty-Sevent, Project 23-131. Modification of the security fencing system at Shady Hill Elementary School, Change Order Number One, Work Authorization Number Twenty-Eight, Project 23-131. Modification of the security fencing system at Ward Highlands Elementary School, Change Order Number One, Work Authorization Number Thirty, Project 23-131. Pool and deck refinishing at Hillcrest School, Change Order Number One, Work Authorization Number Six, Project 21-103. Replacement of storefront and windows at the Finance Building, Change Order Number One, Work Authorization Number Three, Project 23-139. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items, C-11.1 through C-19.3, with the exception of items D-20.1, D-20.2, D-20.3, D-20.4, and D-20.5 that have been placed under discussion, and item C-15.3 that has been pulled and placed under discussion, and item C-18.2 that has been completely withdrawn from the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Conrad. Second by Board Member James. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, five zero. We'll move on to our discussion items. Item D-20.1, may I have a motion to approve bid 4052 MF Indoor Air Quality Remediation and Asbestos Abatement Term Contract?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member James.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you would like to share regarding this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, yes, very briefly, the first two items speak to the costs related to our aging facilities. This first item, 20.1, allows us with your approval tonight to address our indoor air quality, especially with asbestos removal as needed on some of our campuses. And the cost for this is $230,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Is there any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, five zero. Moving on to D-20.2, may I have a motion to approve bid 4053 MF Gutter Installation and Materials Term Contract?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Campbell.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you'd like to share regarding this item?
Certainly. Again, the cost for this is $300,000. We're asking for your permission to provide supplies for the gutters, and the reason that these are important is we're trying to make sure that that water is flowing properly and not leaking into our classrooms. So, with your approval, it would be $300,000.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Is there any discussion from the board? Hearing none, I will just say that I'm grateful that this is getting done because you don't want water pooling around the foundations either, and it's just maintenance that has to be done, but it comes with a high price tag. We're all the way, already over a half a million dollars. If there's any more, no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, five zero. May I have a motion to approve bid 4061AH Temporary Labor for Food Service Substitutes Term Contract?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Conrad.
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you'd like to share regarding this item?
Yes, thank you again. Just briefly, this allows us to provide substitutes for our food services department to make sure that that food is prepared and provided to our students every day, and that's on an as-needed basis with projected costs of about $300,000.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Is there any discussion from the board on this item? Hearing none, it's important for the community to know, not only is this a $300,000 item, but there's also availability for work if you want to be a substitute food service person. It's, kids are usually pretty happy to see you. All right. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, five zero. May I have a motion to approve renewed bid 3974 MF OEM Heavy Truck and Bus Parts Term Contract? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member James.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you'd like to share regarding this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but just to say that at the cost of about $400,000, this will allow us to have the parts for our heavy trucks and buses to keep them on the road to maintain our business. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Is there any discussion from the board? Okay. Hearing none. Again, I appreciate these being put out there. These are all high-ticket items. We're definitely over a million dollars now, and it's just part of what we need every day to run and service our schools. If there's no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, five zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 20.5, may I have a motion to approve the Memorandum of Understanding with the Marion Education Association?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Campbell.
Second.
Second by Board Member Cummings. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you would like to share regarding this item?
Yes. First, I'd like to thank our team for working with, and thank the Marion Education Association for their willingness to work with us on this. This will allow us to fill vacancies with your permission and also to offer immediate contracts with those who are attending our teacher hiring fair, so we can get people into our classrooms and serve our students. So, with your approval, this is what this MOU would allow. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Is there any discussion from the board? Okay. Hearing none, I think it's great that MEA and the district are able to collaborate on this for the benefit of getting great teachers in the classroom sooner rather than later. If there's no more discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, five zero. Okay. Moving on to Item D-21.2, which on your agendas was formerly C-15.3. May I have a motion to approve bid 4058 GM Paint Labor Door Sidelines and Railings?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member James.
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Chair, I need to recuse myself. There's a conflict of interest in this for me.
Thank you, Vice Chair Conrad, for your transparency. Any other discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, four votes to zero, with Vice Chair Conrad recusing. Okay. We'll move on now to Board Member Committee Reports and Concerns. We'll start with a few meeting reminders, actually two. A special board meeting has been scheduled for May 2, 2024 at 7:00 a.m., so set your clocks. The following Administrative Briefing and Work Session has been scheduled for May 2, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. We'll go ahead and move on to comments, and Ms. Martinez, anything from your seat?
No, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Powers, anything from your seat?
Nothing from Legal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you. Very briefly, board, I'm looking forward to hosting the superintendent art show tomorrow night at the Appleton, if you're able to join. I'm looking forward to recognizing our very talented students from across our district, so looking forward to that annual event tomorrow night.
Fantastic guess. It's been a week of great art.
It has.
All right. Board Member Nigard, anything from your seat, sir?
Not today. No, thank you.
All right. Thank you again for being here. All right. Board Member James.
Good evening. Love starting our evenings with recognition and acknowledging all the great work our students are doing, our athletes are doing, our teachers, our principals. I would venture to say that there are not many districts that have every high school principal show up to a board meeting to recognize athletes and teachers, and I, there was also a lot of other principals here, but we only have seven high schools right now, and it is a pleasure to see their commitment to recognizing the individuals on their campus. And I know that it's an effort. Their days start early, and they're here late with us tonight, and so I just wanted to kind of publicly acknowledge that that's probably pretty special to Marion County. I don't think that happens that often. I wanted to ask the board a request of when we thought we were going to bring policies back forward. I know that Dr. Campbell is our resident Tallahassee policy queen, but House Bill 931, which is the Chaplains Bill passed, and so it's going to require us to look at some policy. And so I wanted to just ask the board, or maybe Attorney Powers, if there could be some discussion, not necessarily tonight, but scheduling going forward, when we will address policies again and what that would look like. I think that there's probably, I'm sure, there will be a slew of things that we need to address in policy, but specifically, this will be something that I think we need to create organically, either with a community partner or within our own organization, and so I would just ask that we kind of find some time to do that in the not-so-distant future, would be my request. We don't have to make that decision tonight, though, but I just wanted to put that out there. I wanted to acknowledge that we did lose a student on Sunday, a Reddick Collier, and my hearts go out to that family and that loss and that community. I know that Mr. Manning and the entire staff out there has had a challenging couple of days working through that loss and what that looks like and feels like, and I couldn't begin to imagine that time that they're navigating. But I wanted to just acknowledge that our hearts go out to them in this time, and we're always here to support whatever that looks like as they continue to navigate forward. I wanted to touch briefly on the agenda item that was withdrawn. I wanted to ask, I didn't know if we were going to be able to ask a question prior to getting to comments, so now is the time I have. What was the purpose for withdrawing the item from the board meeting? Is there, either Dr. Gullett or Chair Thrower?
I can answer that. Board Member James, it was a request from my team member who, from Ms. Morant, to pull that. She was still doing some research and felt like it was important to bring back at the next board meeting. So, it's scheduled for the meeting in May.
So, okay. What I'm struggling with is that my understanding for this particular item is that we are abiding by expectations that have been set by the state. And so- And so I'm trying to navigate why we're continuing to delay something that has been years in the delay and frankly don't understand why it was pulled. And I don't, I really think it needed to just stay on the agenda and we move, we have a public discussion and move forward with a vote. I don't know why we are continuing to delay something that really should have been done from 2019 forward. And now we've had it approved appropriately for a year now, and we're trying to fix things from the past. And I, I'm just struggling to understand why we're still navigating this delay. And I guess I'm looking for the board to understand if there's, if there's a reason, if there's something that I'm missing. Because I'm, I feel like there's a piece to the puzzle that I'm missing as to why this would not just move forward and get voted on.
Madam Chair, thank you, Dr. James, because I, I'm in agreement with you on this. This is something that if we go back and look, if I'm not mistaken, and someone can probably correct me if I'm wrong, but this was discussed with a prior board. Two of us were on that board. So if I'm not mistaken, the date was September 19th, 2019. It was discussed in a work session where we originally instituted this police department, school board police department. So the job description that we, that was withdrawn is actually something that should have already been done. And I feel like we keep kicking this can down the road when it should have been either left on the agenda, voted up or down, and been through with it. I think we're doing a great disservice to the people in that position by continuing to put it off. Because from my understanding, if someone's entitled to something or if this position's entitled to something, we need to get in compliance, because we're not in compliance with what we, what we as a board. Maybe some of you are not on that board, but two of us were on that board.
Aye.
Well, in my, I don't even know if I'm allowed to do this, but my request would be, can we just put the item back on and vote for it? I don't understand why we're delaying. And I would ask that the item get put back on the agenda and we just vote for it and move on. I don't understand. If the vote fails, the vote fails. If it passes, it passes and we move on. But I don't understand why the continued delay when this is something that has been years that should have been addressed. So I guess, is there a way I can formalize that to make it most appropriate, Attorney Powers?
Not, not for tonight's business, no. We've concluded already into our comments section. This actually even in itself is not a time period for board discussion on a topic. It's individual comments. Now, we frequently allow it to go into, with your permission, another board member may respond or elaborate on your comments because we're all being collegial and cordial here. But this would need to be brought, placed on the agenda. Public would need to be notified. It would need to go through the process.
So publicly, I'm acknowledging that I don't, I didn't, I don't agree with this item being withdrawn. It needed to have just been addressed tonight. And going forward, if we're going to have items withdrawn in the 11th hour, I feel like there should be some level of discussion with at least individual board members as to whether we want that to even occur. Because if the board members are comfortable with the item coming before us, or the majority of the board members are comfortable with the item coming before us, I don't believe that the item should get pulled. I don't think it should get withdrawn from the agenda.
I would just lay the caveat there. I understand what you're saying. But that also then requires that someone would have to reach out to the board members and find out whether they are, quote, "okay" with it coming before them, which in effect could constitute polling, which is a violation of sunshine.
Well, I think that the absence of any board member complaining about an item would... So what I'm saying is if no board member wants an item withdrawn, or if only one board member has a problem about an item...
The placement or removal of an item from the agenda is within the superintendent's discretion.
Exactly right. Correct. And so this is me publicly saying that I, I don't want items withdrawn from the agenda in the 11th hour. This is, this is my public acknowledgement of that. I don't think that, I think that we need to, the item needs to come before the board in the 11th hour. We've, it's been on the agenda for, published for over a week, or a week at this time. It needs to come before the board and it can be voted up or down. Or we, the board could table it. God forbid we bring that up again. But I don't, I don't think we need to move forward in this direction again. That's not, would not be my request.
And I concur with that, because again, this is five years old. This item is five years old, and it should have been dealt with five years ago. I don't know why it got, why the ball got dropped, but we shouldn't be dealing with this right now. And it should have been already handled. And then to get another delay, that's troubling. That is troubling.
Chair. Yes.
Thank you. I concur. I'm not certain where all of this came about in some ways. What I will say about it being publicly noticed for a full week in part is because it was published originally with no financial implication. And we know that just yesterday, we got notice that that, there is a financial implication. So that wasn't a full week of notice that the board had. Additionally, I think acknowledging, as Attorney Powers has, that the agenda itself is Dr. Gullett's until the board has approved it. The board approved it with a withdrawn, with a withdrawn item. And that was at Dr. Gullett's leadership and her staff's purview. There are some items, I believe, that still are yet to be addressed, not on this specific item, but this specific item actually has led to additional conversations that this board frankly has to have. And until the team is prepared to have those presented to us, I think we need to afford them the opportunity to be prepared when this item is discussed publicly.
Thank you, everyone, for your passion. I too am impatient to get this taken care of. And it's been too long, so therefore I'm not interested in violating sunshine at the ninth hour.
Sure.
When we could, excuse me, when we could get it right, re-present it in two weeks and move on, get it right, have it tight, be done, and move on. So I'm not a fan of, and those of you that know me know, that I'm not a fan of doing last-minute things. I like to be orderly and have our ducks in a row. But it's not typical for an item to be withdrawn at the last minute. And in this situation, it was fully within the superintendent's purview, and I agree. So if there's not any more discussion on that, we'll move on and look forward to seeing it land in two weeks. I said, unless you're, have any more on this particular item, then we'll move on with the rest of the comments.
I did want to say something on this. There is a, we just said there's a financial implication. By continuing to hold it off, by continuing to hold this, and we're going to do what we're going to do anyway. You continue to accrue a financial obligation by continuing to put this off. So that's, I'm putting that on the record, that we're continuing to accrue financial obligations by delaying this.
Which we would, depending on how the board votes, would be paying anyway.
Correct.
So we're either going to pay it in two weeks, or we would be paying it...
It could have been another obligation. When you look at this and what we're, and I'll wait, I'll wait.
Yes, because I feel like we're treading into territory that we really shouldn't be treading into at this point. Attorney Powers, I welcome your...
Nothing further.
So, and I'm in, by no means making the recommendation that anyone violates sunshine. I think that what I'm asking for is that items that are on the agenda come before the board and they not get withdrawn. And we either vote them up, we vote them down, or we table them and we move forward. But if the item is on the agenda, my expectation as a board member is that it had enough value to make its way to the agenda and it continued to move forward. So finally, what I will say is that it is Administrative Professionals Day tomorrow. And so I want to thank our Administrative Professional, Elena Martinez, and all of the Administrative Professionals throughout our school district who serve our variety of departments and support the work. You guys are the backbone to the work that is getting done throughout the district, and you are appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member James. Board Member Campbell?
Sure, thank you. So grateful that now board policy allows a superintendent without our approval to approve deductive change orders, but we did have as acknowledgement more than $81,495.42 in deductive change orders. And so that just means money back into the budget and in the general fund. And so the, the general fund is sacred. And so every time we can put money back in to the general fund is a benefit, for sure. Grateful for the opportunity to attend the Florida School Board Association Finance Forum for a couple of days last week. We not only heard from great, accomplished school district CFOs from around the state, but it's also a wonderful time to collaborate with other school board members around the state and other districts and hear how other districts do things. And perhaps making sure that we have all of our i's dotted and t's crossed in every finance conversation that we have that does have a financial implication is just top of mind presently for, for me specifically. But I think that it's important that we have, obviously, fiscal transparency. And we just learned a lot. It was a great, great time learning about cybersecurity. There were all kinds of little things we delved into, so it was great. Also, I wanted to mention that I've participated recently in the final of this term of the FHSAA Public Liaison Advisory Committee. We wrapped yesterday just after the FHSAA board meeting. And just grateful for the opportunity to serve in that capacity as the school board member representative on that committee. And there are some things that I was able to share, including the conversation we've had about SREF. Senator Graul's representative was on the call and being able to talk specifically about the inequity currently in SREF for indoor sports. And so I think that that conversation will be something that we'll be able to continue. And just every opportunity to share, we're going to take that. So I went to the Hillcrest Art Show today. I know that many of you either went yesterday or today. It was lovely, as I already addressed when I was talking about Marion after-school programs, which I already shared, obviously, was, was near and dear to my heart as our student board representative. So this has just been like a full night, as our student athletes, like all the things that, that Board Member Campbell has an affinity for, we've been able to share tonight. I also wanted to acknowledge, as Ms. Trulie did, about Teacher Appreciation Week. I know that we will have a school board work session ahead of Teacher Appreciation Week, but we will not have another school board meeting before then. And just super grateful, continue to be super grateful for all the work that our amazing educators do every day and whatever we can do to assist them in every endeavor, just ready and, ready and willing to do it. Dr. James just acknowledged Administrative Professionals today. So I also wanted to say that and to the secretaries and Administrative Professionals in all of our schools, assistants in the superintendent's office, assistants in Attorney Powers offices, as well as our own Ms. Martinez, just continuing to be grateful for the work that often those unsung heroes do that we don't acknowledge nearly enough, but I'm grateful there is a day that's dedicated to those fabulous individuals. And the last thing that I wanted to say tonight, I had the privilege to attend now the second installment of the new Bellevue CEP's morning, I think it's On the Rise is what they're calling it, Bellevue on the Rise. And it's being hosted at Bellevue High School. And so it's just a really fun time to have business leaders and community leaders not only partake in the culinary expertise of our students providing the breakfast there, but also being able to see our students at work. And so they, they could see that today, and it was great. But I also wanted to acknowledge the speaker today was Jeremy Williams, who's a Chick-fil-A owner-operator of two Chick-fil-A's here in Ocala. And I went up and acknowledged him personally to say thank you. And this is going to be a time I'm going to say thank you, not only to our business community, and we acknowledge so many tonight of our business partners, and all of those resources are valuable. But I want to give a shout out to all of the business owners who employ our students while they are in high school and while they are in school and they are employed. And I have a personal example that I was a small group leader of a student when she was in 10th grade in one of our high schools who was working at Chick-fil-A for Mr. Williams. And I saw her recently at one of our career expos because she was doing hiring for his Chick-fil-A's, because she has continued to grow in managerial status in his business operation. And I just wanted to say thank you to him for the investment that he had made in our students while they are still students. And I just want to give a shout out to all other business leaders who are doing that very thing. It really means a lot that those students are being able to get work experience, valuable work experience from leaders in our community before they graduate and before they move on to their next step in life, before they choose their E, potentially even. And it has made an impact on that particular former student's life, I know, and all the other students currently working and those former students as well. So just want to give a shout out to our business owners, because it was a great reminder today as Jeremy Williams was sharing about his why and how important we talk about the whats often, but it's great that we also talk about the why. So those conclude my comments tonight. Chair Thrower, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Board Member Cummings?
Thank you, Chair. Tonight, we, we had a lot of, a lot of wonderful recognitions from staff to students. And that's just a testament to all the great work that's going on within our district. Our superintendent has a simple team of people that are putting students first. And that's vitally important to the success of this district. Championships can't be won unless you have a great bench. Oscars can't be won unless you have a great supporting cast. And this district has a great supporting cast. So I want to thank all of them for what they do, the unsung heroes, the ones that, that often don't come down to the meetings, the ones that are, are not in the spotlight, the ones that are in the trenches every day that are doing the work, the Elenas, the Terries, the Casillas, those people that are behind the scenes that are making it happen for us that make it look easy for us. So I appreciate the Robins and all those different people around our district that are doing great things every day to make this district better. We continue to, we continue to move forward, encouraged by the needle that we're moving forward, that we're pushing this thing to a different level. So this morning, I had the pleasure to be at a volunteers' breakfast. I want to thank Ms. Parker and Ms. Robison at Howard Middle School. They were recognizing the, the community volunteers at Howard Middle School for all the support that they give throughout the year. But it's not just Howard Middle School. There's, there's community volunteers, there's community organizations that volunteer the resources, the time, the money, the talent, their treasures to many of our schools that, that are not publicly known, that are unsung. And I just want to thank all of those, those entities that do that on a daily basis. It may not, they may not be able to give $5,000 or $2,000, but every ounce of energy that they extend into our schools to help our kids do better, to help our schools be better, I truly appreciate that. So with that being said, I conclude my comments.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. Vice Chair Conrad?
Yes, good evening, everyone. The first hour of our meeting, there's a theme. I think it was all overwhelming and positive for us. But you hear the saying over and over, "It takes a village to raise a child." And I think this evening painted the perfect picture for that happening in our Marion County public schools. From our staff, leadership and educators, from our students to community members, donations, just the whole gamut. It's just really impressive, the work and the time and the effort that goes into helping every student succeed. And the diverse opportunity that our students have is, I feel, something to really be proud of. So I just wanted to acknowledge again and tell everyone how much I appreciate the commitment to education here in Marion County. I also attended the Finance Forum. I'm thankful for that opportunity. Sometimes I show up for that and feel like I'm learning another language. There's so many different acronyms and so many different rules and laws and guidelines. And so I too learned a lot. But what I walked away with most is, Ms. Boston Ellis, I am thankful for you listening other districts share about the challenges they face and obstacles that they weren't prepared to tackle. I, I felt so thankful that we are in the position that we are in, the decisions that you have guided us to be in a good place. And even though there are challenges, it was just, it was awesome. To be able to sit and listen and not feel, I think, some of the pressure and disheartenment that some other districts felt, learning about the challenges that face us. And so thank you for the work that your team does every day in keeping this ship moving forward. forward. And so I'm just really appreciative for you and your team. I too got to visit the Hillcrest Art Show this morning. I, last year was my first opportunity to attend. And I, when I left last year, I got on the phone and I called my husband and I said, "You have to come with me this next year." So he and I went this morning and he got to enjoy it all. So it really is remarkable. If you haven't had the opportunity to attend that, put it on your calendar for next year. Those students and the staff put a lot of effort into making something magical happen, using all of their talents and abilities, and it really is remarkable. So thank you for the team at Hillcrest, their students, their staff, for putting all of that together. I don't, I think back my classroom days and what it would take to put something like that together. I just, I don't even know how many hours it would take to assemble all that they have done. So just really a great opportunity and experience for our students. My last thing is just a request. Dr. Gullett, our last meeting, I asked for some information about our third-grade reading camp from the summer before. And what, let's see, what was my specific ask? After reading camp, how many students moved on to fourth grade? And how many, how many did it affect? How many did it positively affect out of the students that attended? And how many were passed on to fourth grade? And so as we were looking at the summer plans and the staffing plans, and I was just looking at how many, how many staff members we have, how many students we have in need, you know, for third-grade reading camp? And so what was our success last year? And so I just wanted some information on that.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair.
Business partners and mentors for take stock and, you know, pastors and just, you know, so embedded in the, in the community and so active. And having been on the board, you know, for a little while now, that was something that the schools always said, you know, they almost didn't even know what board members did, isn't that because they want us to visit schools, you know, and they want us to see what they do and feel what they feel. And I just think that this board, you know, does a, does a great job of that. And it can be a fine line because they're busy and obviously, there, a lot of them feel like they have to, you know, oh, a board member's here. But, but I think that, you know, we're doing a lot to continue to blur that line between the board and the district and the schools. You know, we're all playing on the same team, as Board Member Cummings said. And when you build that trust, people really begin to show you what they're capable of. And we certainly saw that the first hour tonight. I too was incredibly grateful from attending the campaign finance forum, and here's why. I heard from a lot of other districts that they don't even do cybersecurity training at all, let alone at the scale that we do. So hi, Mr. Van Vannoudy, thank you very much. And I know that started, you know, prior to you, but, but it's continued and it is updated and it is current and relevant. The fraud, controlling fraud, just having controls in place for cybersecurity, you know, maintaining the healthy reserves, keeping the board apprised of our overall total financial picture, not just on a monthly basis, but you know, anytime one of us wants to pick up the phone and ask a question, you know, we don't get dodged. There's, there's a really good, strong, trusting relationship. Does everything always get done exactly when we wanted to? You know, no, but, but, but the intention is there, and that means a lot. So having a ship this big, you know, keeping it solvent to the point where even the big boys in New York feel like we're great credit risks is just a testament to how this district is, is running. So just wanted to share my thank you as well. It's also Bus Driver Appreciation Week. And there are all kinds of multiple appreciations going on this time of year. And I almost hesitate to pick out one because there's, there's others that are happening concurrently, but I did want to mention that. I also wanted to mention that Marion County is now a 4-H State Champions. They're headed to Nationals. Yep, which is a big deal. We've already heard about the Hillcrest Art Show today. And I started my day at Fort King at their attendance response committee. Fort King had a tough year last year. And this year, the change and the turnaround is just really remarkable and just rocking it in terms of coming up with ideas to connect with families and encourage kids to come to school. And one of our big challenges, you know, we're learning a lot about student voice, you know, well, ask the kids, you know, especially middle school. They're going to tell you, you might not like the answer, but they're going to tell you. And you know, how come you're late to school all the time? Well, I'm tired, you know. Well, why are you tired? Well, I'm up all night, you know. I'm on my phone, I'm on my game system, whatever, you know. There's only so much we can do about that as a school, but, but I know a lot can be done because we see the outpouring of the community at our meetings. And so we need this partnership. And it's not easy. All of us sitting up here, you know, except for you, have, have kids or that have gone through the system or are in the system now, you know, the struggle is real. You know, as kids get older, we have to fight that. But it, but it's worth fighting the fight because once kids have better use of their time, they're able to get their work done, they're able to turn it in, they're able to not be eight-point-fives wishing they were going on to high school, you know, it's all connected. So I just wanted to applaud Fort King Middle School for their continued commitment. Also, and this is, you know, where, where it does get tough, you know, I wasn't sure to say this in the beginning or say it at the end, but I think it's appropriate to say it at the end. Board Member James shared that we did lose a student at Reddick, and, and we just lost another one today. And that parent shared something, and I think it's important because we have a lot that we're passionate about. We have a lot that we're trying to accomplish. We have a lot that maybe we squabble over and spark every once in a while. But, but between the triggers need to be more glimmers, in my opinion. And this is just paraphrasing, but this particular parent shared, but more than anything, give the gift of love with all your hearts and all your souls to your families, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your enemies. Yes, I know that's hard, but love unconditionally. So I'm going to conclude my comments with that tonight. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Martinez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion then to approve the expulsion of student J D two-four dash two-three-zero E, J D two-four dash two-three-seven, J D two-four dash two-three-eight E, J D two-four dash two-three-nine E, J D two-four dash two-four-zero, J D two-four dash two-four-one, J D two-four dash two-four-two, J D two-four dash two-four-four, J D two-four dash two-four-five, J D two-four dash two-four-six E, J D two-four dash two-four-eight E, J D two-four dash two-eight-nine, J D two-four dash two-five-zero, J D two-four dash two-five-one, J D two-four dash two-five-two, J D two-four dash two-five-three, and J D two-five, J D two-five-four, with educational services for the remainder of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year and the first, second, and third quarters of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. May I have a motion, please?
Excuse me?
And I just want to make a correction.
Correction?
It was a correction. J D two-four dash two-four-nine, I believe you said dash two-eight-nine. So strike J D two-four dash two-eight-nine from the record, and it is J D two-four dash two-four-nine.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you for pointing that out. And that was accurate on my script, so I just misread.
And...
And the last one also?
J D two-five...
It's J D two-four dash two-five-four.
J D two-four dash two-five-four.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have that, Ms. Martinez? Okay, thank you very much. And I'll say again, with educational services for the remainder of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year and the first, second, and third quarters of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Now, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Campbell.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, five votes to zero. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Board Member Campbell.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, five-zero. This meeting is adjourned at seven thirty-one P M. Not bad. Thank you, all.[1777.41][1777.41][music]